Make you do two things at once. So I'll call the meeting in the Falmouth Road School Committee to order. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much. So I remind everyone that the meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14 and remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of the meeting to notify me as chair and I'll inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Do we have anyone here for public comment tonight? Okay. So first on our agenda is to hear from our student advisory. Kate, Kate Brody is here with us tonight. Can you fill us in on what's going on over at Falmouth High School?
Sure. So I'm a sophomore at the high school and my name's Kate Brody, like you just said. So just for some stuff that's coming up soon, the sophomore class is having a car wash on Saturday, April 28th at the Murray and McDonald Insurance Place, right near Stop &amp; Shop. And then the juniors are having their prom on May 12th at the Kuna Messet and the junior class members voted to have the theme of VIP, so it's like red carpet. So the seniors have a lot going on in the next few weeks. They are having a class field trip to the Red Sox game on Monday, the 30th, and there are 70 students signed up to go, so they're pretty happy about that because that's a lot of them. And they are having their senior banquet on Tuesday, May 29th, at the Flying Bridge. As for the sports, the spring sports, the seasons have started off really well. Girls lacrosse and boys tennis are both undefeated and they're leading in the ACL, the Atlantic Coast League. The girls softball team beat Nantucket today and they're three and four. And baseball is five and two and boys track is two and oh and girls track is oh and two. And girls golf has gone two and four and the other teams have, Sailing has been able to get out on the water a few times, but they've had to battle the weather. Yeah, yeah. And then the girls tennis have also started up pretty well. And as for the vote on the turf field, I know a lot of students are involved in like trying to get community members to vote because they're not allowed to vote themselves, most people. And a committee has been formed and a lot of students have been interested in that and trying to work on that. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Excellent. Good job. I feel so informed. Love that.
Well done.
Any questions for Kate?
What time does the car wash start?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to mention that. It's from 10 to 2.
Okay, for those of us who need to plan ahead.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. Kate, we can take a lesson from you with how you sent your acronym about the Atlantic Coast League and the Southern Atlantic Coast League.
I know, actually did it. I know, we do it a lot. Good point. Any other questions for Kate? Thank you so much. You are welcome to stay as long as you would like, or if you need to go, we totally understand that as well. And don't feel obligated to do these. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next, we have to accept a whole bunch of donations. It's so nice when this is what our agenda looks like. So first is acting on a $2,500 donation to the junior prom by the road race.
So this donation would help offset the cost of prom expenses, room rentals, food, decorations, et cetera. So I would recommend that you accept the donation.
I'll make a motion.
And a second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the $2,500 donation to the prom? Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. And next, we have a huge donation, $18,000 to the girls softball team.
Yes, again, from the Falmouth Road Race. And in your packet, you will see a picture of the shed that they would like to construct. And it's the same size as the shed for the boys, for the boy shed that was installed at the Lawrence School. And then the purchase of an infield drag machine, and you'll see a picture of that as well.
Awesome. Who's that guy?
We don't know. But that is what the machine looks like.
I think that's a girl. What? That's a woman.
It's like a talker toy.
Sorry. Okay, well, anyway.
I'll make a motion to accept the $18,000 donation for the girls softball team.
Sure. Second? I'm gonna second that. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting a very generous $18,000 from the road race? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Another unanimous. And then the last one, acting on a plaque donated by the Falmouth Baseball Boosters. Dr. Gagnon, any, oh, would you like to clap, please? Oh, come on up. Yeah, in your packet, you'll see.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for coming.
I'm Tom, Principal of the Lawrence School, thanks.
Hi, I am Dr. Christina King-Gagnon, President of the Falmouth Baseball Boosters Club.
So we are in the process of finishing up things at the baseball field, at the ball field at the Lawrence School. And one of the things that Dr. Gagnon and the Baseball Boosters would like to do is to acknowledge some of the hard work that's gone into it. So I'm gonna let Dr. Gagnon talk, but I will say that she has been very helpful. She's been great at communicating with the school and keeping us posted on progress. And she's been very patient with our process as well, so.
Thank you. So basically, I have been the president of the Falmouth Baseball Boosters Club this is my second year. And I'm here to propose that Lawrence Baseball Field receive a plaque. The plaque will be two feet by three feet wide, melamine lowered. It will be screwed to the left side wall on the shed facing the school. And this plaque represents an acknowledgement of gratitude to all the businesses, organizations, and individuals who volunteered hours and their supplies to improve the functionality of the Lawrence Baseball Field. In the past, Lawrence Field was in severe disrepair and was actually very unsafe for the baseball players to use. So this project has taken about a year and a half to two years to get completed. So we're near the end of this project, which is really great to see. And there is one final project which has not been spoken of yet, but basically it's will be coming forward in the future, which is to get approval for a fencing system around the whole baseball field. We're hoping that the Community Preservation Committee will provide funding for this project. And it is in the preliminary stages at this point, but I hope that the school committee will approve this plaque and for the final project in the future. So thank you for your time.
Thanks.
You will see in the paper pamphlet that you have there, the basic idea of the plaque.
So I just wanted to ask you one question. The information that I have says three feet by four feet, but you said two by three. So is it two by three?
If we could get a three by four, that would be ideal, but it's, that's all tentative, so. But ideally, three by four would be ideal.
We'll make a motion to approve the plaque.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yes.
Leah?
I'm just, I'm wondering, like, I love this idea of thanking people, but I'm just wondering historically how we've been doing this. If we don't have plaques in other places for thanking people and now we're starting to thank people, what does this, what does this look like now for us and historically? What has it been?
That's a fair question.
My suggestion would be to put thank yous on all the fields of people that have contributed.
Then where do we, do we draw the line at fields? Because then what do we do about things like science labs or?
Well, isn't it, excuse me, I'm sorry. I noticed throughout the schools, there's like memorabilia for a student who have passed away, or there's been like Aunt Nucci gym. So there's been a lot of acknowledgement in the different buildings and parks and part of the school as well, so just.
Yeah. I knew, was it you, Andrew? Who was it? I know somebody had their hand up.
I did as well, but go ahead. I actually appreciated some of the background of the other pieces that had gone into this project. And I just think it's kind of interesting as we're looking at the condition of all of our fields and we know that we have a lot of work to do. And it seems like the Falmouth Baseball Boosters has taken upon themselves to figure out how to improve that. And I'm just thinking of that general idea of being put into the mix when we're looking at the big picture of all of our fields and when can somebody do that, when does somebody not? And then if we do go down that road, what you're saying about the wanting to thank everybody appropriately, sort of having some kind of conditions around that too. So, yeah, it's just.
Didn't we do that at our last meeting? Didn't we approve names, signs with names on it?
We accepted the scoreboard that had a name on it.
So what's the difference? I don't see any difference. I'm looking for it in the minutes, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, yeah. But it had to match the other one.
I'm gonna come back to, I think that it's important that we acknowledge the people that are kind enough to step up and help us. You know, it's been no secret throughout the town that our fields are in desperate need of assistance. And again, I'm coming back to thanking the road race that how lucky we are to have them, as well as, you know, Cape Cod aggregates, the LaRusso family, you know, Cobosa, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Bushy, all of the, not to leave anybody out, but to acknowledge all of these people that are acknowledging the desperate need for the fields and are putting their time and their efforts where their mouth is. And I think that the town needs help and the district needs assistance. And I again want to appreciate what these folks have done, not only with this field, the baseball field, but with, you know, some of the other fields and, you know, the shed, the dragger. I understand that we could be setting precedents, but you know, hopefully, when my son gets to Lawrence and gets to play on that field, he's gonna look up and he's gonna say, wow, I didn't know that so-and-so and so-and-so helped. Wow, I think I'm gonna really thank them because they pay attention to that. And I think that it's important for us to show the young people that money doesn't grow on trees. And these are people that have helped us because we can't always do it all ourselves and they're helping us.
Walter, oh, I'm sorry, Walter then Bill.
I think it's a basic fundamental, I've been involved in athletics for a long period of time, that people like recognition. So the more you recognize, the more you're gonna encourage other people to contribute because they're gonna say, I want to be recognized also. So I think this is a positive step in the right direction if we do it. And I think it'll, it'll bring more contributions in rather than less.
Bill?
I think it's absolutely fantastic. I think it's absolutely fantastic that people in this community support kids. And in the educational world, we're supporting kids. And to give people a little bit of acclamation, we need to do this, it's really important. And obviously, you do things like this and it continues. And in the best interest of our kids, that's what's important.
John?
Yeah, I really appreciate the generous donations and the time that's spent. And I love the fact that it's the boosters acknowledging the folks. And as far as, I would just assume see everything, you know, patchwork with all these different plaques and people helping out as we go through the years and acknowledging people for encouraging more, like Walter had said too, is encouraging more people to participate. On the notion of moving forward with, hopefully, then we can just wrap it up and vote for it, I would say we add, I'm adding, amending the motion to define it as being the two by three, which was originally presented. And then that way, hopefully, anybody who has any kind of qualms about it can run with it. Because two by three is still a good-sized sign. And maybe that will let us finish up on it and just vote to finish it.
Is there a second for John's motion?
For the amendment? Don't you have to vote on the amendment?
I would second it. I actually have my main, I have two issues with it. One was the size, three by four, I think is just, is just too big. So two by three would work for me. And the other piece is that I feel like a lot of this, and I'll come back to, this relates to Leah's questions, but I feel like the signs that we typically have up serve as naming, they serve a function first and then a thank you second. So we recognize people who have donated things, but the primary purpose of that signage is not usually just to thank someone. And this feels a little bit different to me. I would rather that it was a very, you know, a large sign that says Lawrence Baseball Field and that the thank you piece was secondary instead of being so predominant. I like the idea of thanking everyone, but I would, I prefer it to be not the primary function of a sign, especially one large. So, okay, so now that I've said my piece, we have to vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Could you repeat it? I'm sorry, I got lost.
The amendment is to specify that the field, the sign on the building would be two feet by three feet. Any discussion, other discussion on the size amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Any abstentions? It passes with one opposed. So now we're, any other discussion, coming back to Leah, what do we know about the historical? Do we have other thank you plaques up? I know there's one at the newly done gym at Lawrence, right? Don't we vote on that?
Morse Park.
Morse Park, sorry. Yeah, the Fitness Center.
And it says, thank you.
To the road race.
To the road race for donating.
Road race, road race, road race.
Yeah, a lot of road race, which, you know, has been huge help donating money, but the reason I feel this is a little bit different is because these people actually, from what I'm assuming, put in their time as well.
Right, not just money. Yeah.
It's not just about money.
Yeah, and I think that's really important.
Kids need to see that we are thanking them and that we are grateful.
So, yeah, I mean, my question is just, I think that, you know, we just need to be cognizant of this, that I love the idea of thanking people, but where do we, you know, people come back to us and say, well, we need to have plaques in all of these other places. Are we ready to do that? And maybe we are, if we want to acknowledge everyone to be thankful for. And I'm totally support being thankful for everyone.
I just want to be consistent.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're kind of sticking with a protocol. And I know the signage thing has been coming up a lot and we have been talking about policy around that. And I just think that as the policy subcommittee is really thinking about where these priorities are, I think this is a priority because it seems to be coming to us at every meeting, a signage piece.
And we end up spending a lot of time talking about it because we don't have the guidance from the policy.
Yeah. So I'm happy to accept this right now with the amendment of the two by three. I just think that we need to make sure we have parameters of what this looks like.
All this talking is not about whether or not we're appreciative. We need to work out our own issues on this, clearly.
Yeah, it's just the bigger, bigger picture.
It's the big picture that we need to work on. Please don't feel like we're not grateful.
I do want to mention that most of these individuals and organizations are not aware that we're promoting this plaque. So once that plaque is up, if you do approve, they will be just as surprised as everyone else.
Let's vote on this because I'm sure, I think we're most, it's gonna, all in favor of approving the sign as amended with the size restriction. Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's like town meeting, a long way to go for a result that's all unanimous. Thank you so much for taking the initiative.
Thank you very much.
I truly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to put you through all that.
No worries.
Next, we have a presentation on the superintendent evaluation.
All right. So thank you, Sharon, for putting that up there. So I'm gonna go through the process with Sharon, click and approve for me.
Yes.
Okay.
This is.
That's my signal.
And I'll flip the page.
Okay. So each school committee member has submitted individual evaluations of Dr. Nancy Taylor. And what, what the process was is that each individual member looked through the goals, Nancy's goals for the year, and ranked them accordingly. Did not meet some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. And then the individual members also looked at the standards, which we have a rubric to look at, and marked, ranked Nancy according to unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And to get the evidence for how Nancy has been doing this year professionally, Nancy had a huge binder of evidence along with what we have seen in action and observations that have been done. So the next step is that I actually get all of the evaluations, so as the appointee from the chair, or the designate from the chair, I compile all of those results and come up with our compiled overall school committee evaluation of Nancy Taylor for this school year. All right, we can move on. So in going through, I'm just gonna go through each of the goals and I'm gonna, anyone who wants to see something after each of these goals, I'm gonna open it up for any comments or discussion around. But first, Nancy's professional practice goal was to improve her overall professional practice as a superintendent through her participation in the Lynch School of Education at Boston College. And as we know, Nancy has successfully completed that program and now has her ED. So it's very exciting. And I think we collectively ranked you as exceeded for this. And we were really lucky because Nancy actually gave us a big presentation around all of the things she's learned through this program. So I think that resounded in our exceeding mark. But does anyone have any comment about that ranking?
I'm one.
Yeah, you are. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the student learning goal. So Nancy's student learning goal this year was during the school year, the district will increase supports to students and families challenged by substance abuse in the community in an effort to increase the availability of students for learning. And we ranked collectively Nancy as met for this goal. And she's been working hard towards this. Any comments? Okay. So district improvement goals, there actually were three of these. And the first one was to increase understanding of the impact of the legalization of marijuana on the school district. And we've seen significant progress with this. And the second one is to strengthen the admin team's understanding and participation in the budget planning process and increase the interconnectedness among students' availability to learn, instructional practice, and the impact on the budget planning, fiscal health, fiduciary responsibilities. And we scored Nancy as a met on that. And increased support and enhanced critical relationships with principals and community departments. And Nancy met on that goal too. Any comments? All right. So then we had another goal. Nancy, you had a lot of goals this year.
I know.
You really did.
Yeah.
So to enhance community awareness of current and ongoing district initiatives and events. And this was a partnership with Sonya.
With Sonya. This is kind of a fun one, just to put information out into the community and Sonya and I did do that together.
Yeah. So we ranked Nancy as a met with this. Any comments? Okay, so I'm gonna go into the standards now. All right. So instructional leadership is the first standard and we ranked Nancy as proficient in that. The second standard is management and operation and we ranked Nancy as exemplary. The third is family and community engagement and we ranked Nancy as proficient. And the fourth is professional culture and we ranked Nancy as exemplary. I just want to point out that it is very rare to get rankings of exemplary in superintendency. So the next slide. Dr. Nancy Taylor got an exemplary rating overall from us this year. So collectively, that is your ranking. And if we want to go to that next slide, we also gave her a high rating on student learning, which is really the highest rating you can have in having impact on student learning. And then we go to the next slide. We're gonna miss you greatly, Nancy.
Oh, thank you.
And our Falmouth schools and community have greatly benefited from your steadfast, reflective, and inclusive leadership and vision.
And vision.
So opening it up to comments, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That's for you to take over now. I am gonna read what I said about overall performance. Using nautical terms, I would describe Nancy's performance this year as a captain who sailed our FPS ship on smooth waters. There was turbulence in the prior years, but she righted the ship. By developing an excellent rapport with the Selectment and Finance Committee of the town, our budget received their prompt endorsement. The Selectmen are on board in recommending approval of the new turf field to the town meeting. Nancy helped to steer the committee on this in order to gain approval. So I mean, what a difference between last year and this year. And it just, you smoothed it right over and it was a great year. It was, and I'm not glad it's your last year, but it's a good last year because it was just, I think, a great overall year. I think that's sake because you only have three months left, right?
Oh, famous last words.
No, no, you know what I, I, I'm, thank you, Terry.
I'm gonna read mine too. Dr. Taylor, I love it, I got to write Dr. Taylor, it's very fun. Had another stellar year leading Falmouth Public Schools, which is making it all that more difficult to see her lead. I'm grateful for all she's given the district over the past decades and for the planning and team she has set in place for the years to come. I will miss her professionalism and reflective nature, political and financial acumen and straightforwardness and sense of humor. She has placed the focus back on what's best for kids, which is where it belongs, and has created a culture that values every person, every student, and a sense of obligation to meet every student where they are so that they can achieve. Dr. Taylor's impact on the district and those she has worked with will be long-lasting.
Thank you very much.
Who's next? I know everyone wants in. Let's just go down the road. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have to say, I'm melancholy as I'm writing this review. And then to see everything as it happens too as well because you've made a great impact on the district, you've made a great impact on the school system. As a parent with three kids, you've made a great impact on me and my family. So I thank you sincerely for that. You're great communicator, you have a real vision. And I have no doubt, and I want to repeat this, I have no doubt that you're gonna be a resource in some form or fashion moving forward in the future. So thank you for now and in the future, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Who's next?
I can go next. I'm just gonna read one of my comments. No one holds Nancy to a higher standard than Nancy. That being said, she also holds her staff and educators to be their best selves. When it comes to school committee agendas, she is clear and concise with them. When items are requested, she is prompt with either answering the questions or gets the item on the next possible agenda without delay. Thank you, Nancy, it has been an honor.
Way to go for a result that's all unanimous. Thank you so much for taking the initiative.
Thank you very much.
I truly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to put you through all that.
No worries.
Next, we have a presentation on the superintendent evaluation.
All right. So, thank you Sharon for putting that up there. So, I'm gonna go through the process with Sharon clicking through for me.
Yes.
Okay.
You got this.
That's my signal.
And I'll flip the page.
Okay. I'm ready. Okay. So, each school committee member has submitted individual evaluations of Dr. Nancy Taylor. And what the process was is that each individual member looked through the goals, Nancy's goals, for the year and ranked them accordingly. Did not meet some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. And then the individual members also looked at the standards, which we have a rubric to look at, and marked, ranked Nancy according to unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And to get the evidence for how Nancy has been doing this year professionally, Nancy had a huge binder of evidence along with what we have seen in action and observations that have been done. So, the next step is that I actually get all of the evaluations. So, as the appointee from the chair, or the designate from the chair, I compile all of those results and come up with our compiled overall school committee evaluation of Nancy Taylor for this school year. All right. We can move on. So, in going through, I'm just gonna go through each of the goals and I'm gonna, anyone who wants to see something after each of these goals, I'm gonna open it up for any comments or discussion around. But first, Nancy's professional practice goal was to improve her overall professional practice as a superintendent through her participation in the Lynch School of Education at Boston College. And as we know, Nancy has successfully completed that program.
Yay!
And now has her EDD. So, it's very exciting. And I think we collectively ranked you as exceeded for this. And we were really lucky because Nancy actually gave us a big presentation around all of the things she's learned through this program. So, I think that resounded in our exceeding mark. But does anyone have any comment about that ranking?
I'm one.
Yeah, you are. Okay. So, I'm gonna move on to the student learning goal. So, Nancy's student learning goal this year was during the school year, "The district will increase supports to students and families challenged by substance abuse in the community in an effort to increase the availability of students for learning." And we ranked collectively Nancy as met for this goal. And she's been working hard towards this. Any comments? So, district improvement goals, there actually were three of these. And the first one was to increase understanding of the impact of the legalization of marijuana on the school district. And we've seen significant progress with this. And the second one is to strengthen the admin team's understanding and participation in the budget planning process and increase the interconnectedness among students' availability to learn, instructional practice, and the impact on the budget planning, fiscal health, fiduciary responsibilities. And we scored Nancy as a met on that. And increased support and enhanced critical relationships with principals and community departments. And Nancy met on that goal, too. Any comments? All right. So, then we had another goal. Nancy, you had a lot of goals this year.
I know.
You really did.
Yeah.
So, to enhance community awareness of current and ongoing district initiatives and events. And this was a partnership with Sonya.
With Sonya. This is kind of a fun one, just to put information out into the community. And Sonya and I did do that together.
Yeah. So, we ranked Nancy as a met with this. Any comments? Okay. So, I'm gonna go into the standards now. All right. So, instructional leadership is the first standard, and we ranked Nancy as proficient in that. The second standard is management and operation, and we ranked Nancy as exemplary. The third is family and community engagement, and we ranked Nancy as proficient. And the fourth is professional culture, and we ranked Nancy as exemplary. I just wanna point out that it is very rare to get rankings of exemplary in superintendency. So, the next slide. Dr. Nancy Taylor got an exemplary rating overall from us this year. So, collectively, that is your ranking. And if we wanna go to that next slide, we also gave her a high rating on student learning, which is really the highest rating you can have in having impact on student learning. And then we go to the next slide.
Oh.
We're gonna miss you greatly, Nancy.
Thank you.
And our Falmouth schools and community have greatly benefited from your steadfast, reflective, and inclusive leadership and vision.
And vision.
So, opening it up to comments, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's for you to take over now.
I am gonna read what I said about overall performance. Using nautical terms, I would describe Nancy's performance this year as a captain who sailed our FPS ship on smooth waters. There was turbulence in the prior years, but she righted the ship. By developing an excellent rapport with the Selectment and Finance Committee of the town, our budget received their prompt endorsement. The Selectmen are on board in recommending approval of the new turf field to the town meeting. Nancy helped to steer the committee on this in order to gain approval. So, I mean, what a difference between last year and this year. And it just, you smoothed it right over. It was a great year. It was, and I'm not glad it's your last year, but it's a good last year 'cause it was just, I think, a great overall year. I think that's sake 'cause only have three months left, right?
Oh, fatal last words.
No. No, you know what I?
I do.
I'm, thank you, Teri.
I'm gonna read mine, too. Dr. Taylor, I love it. I got to write Dr. Taylor. It's very fun. "Had another stellar year leading Falmouth Public Schools, which is making it all that more difficult to see her lead. I'm grateful for all she's given the district over the past decades and for the planning and team she has set in place for the years to come. I will miss her professionalism and reflective nature, political and financial acumen, and straightforwardness, and sense of humor. She has placed the focus back on what's best for kids, which is where it belongs, and has created a culture that values every person, every student, and a sense of obligation to meet every student where they are so that they can achieve. Dr. Taylor's impact on the district and those she has worked with will be long lasting."
Thank you very much.
Who's next? I know everyone wants in. Let's just go down the road. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have to say I'm melancholy as I'm writing this review. And then to see everything as it happens, too, as well, because you've made a great impact on the district. You've made a great impact on the school system. As a parent with three kids, you've made a great impact on me and my family. So, I thank you sincerely for that. You're great communicator. You have a real vision. And I have no doubt, and I wanna repeat this, I have no doubt that you're gonna be a resource in some form or fashion moving forward in the future. So, thank you for now and in the future, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Who's next?
I can go next. I'm just gonna read one of my comments. "No one holds Nancy to a higher standard than Nancy. That being said, she also holds her staff and educators to be their best selves. When it comes to school committee agendas, she is clear and concise with them. When items are requested, she is prompt with either answering the questions or gets the item on the next possible agenda without delay. Thank you, Nancy. It has been an honor." Personally, I really wanted my kids to have a similar experience that I had with Dr. Nancy Taylor growing up. And I know that superintendents don't last like they once did, but I truly think that they are gonna get what I got with you. And I appreciate that. I appreciate your time. I think that you have really set the bar high. And I look forward to seeing what you have in your future because I know that it's not done in our community or in education. And...
Enjoy your time. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Megan.
So, I feel like I got a little cheated 'cause I only got to really work with you for a year. But during that first year, I really tried to go to all of your forums and just kinda get the feel of what type of leader you are. And I was just really impressed with you because you have a way of answering questions and making people feel at ease. And you also have a way of stopping things when they are going down the wrong path or if they're not, you know, if that wasn't the focus of the forum. And I think that's really hard to do. And even in the community, when things came up, you were always willing to talk about it, even when they were difficult conversations. And I think that really shows what a strong person you are. And it's what a superintendent really needs to be. And I think you did an amazing job. And I wish you were gonna be here longer so I could kinda see your progress and what you were gonna work on next, 'cause I think you have a lot of great visions and ideas.
Thank you, Megan.
So, Megan's told a lot of what I was gonna say.
That's why I went before you.
But in addition to that, I think what really stands out to me is the focus on all students. And I think that is absolutely critical because our district is never going to, it will only be as good as our weakest student. And the fact that we're going to focus on everybody in every situation, I really, you know, see that is what has come through in your leadership because it comes up all the time in every situation. And I've noticed how that has become what everybody in this district really understands, at least in the schools, the leadership. And I think that if we can keep that going, you'll have a successful legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Gee, thanks a lot for taking all...
We were smart, Melissa.
One of the things that is immediate and ongoing is meeting the needs of all students. And we're in the kid business, and you've done a great job with evaluating staff, personnel, and continually trying to meet the needs of all our students, whether they're AP, whether they're ELL, whether they're special ed. There's that personification that we're gonna get to all of you. And I think that's fantastic. I also have to commend you on the field study. I think you did a great job of leadership qualities, trying to get the community involved as best as we could, as you could. I think there was a commitment by a lot of people that obviously was supported in town meeting. And there was obviously concerns with everybody going into town meeting that it could be close. But I think with the surveys, with the commitment to excellence, that people realized that this is in best interest of all students. And I think we're moving forward. And I think, obviously, going to the ballot box is really important. And I think we should push that as a committee, as a group, as a town, et cetera. But I thought your leadership skills were fantastic in that, and I appreciate that. And essentially, one of the things that I've been enjoying, and sometimes I go, "Oh, the school's calling me again," 'cause obviously I can see the number, it's the robo-calls. I get a kick out of them. But it's that constant communication with the public that is so important and that so many districts overlook that concept. And I think that's great. And you've set a high bar. And the next person better do an awfully good job because you've set a high bar. And thank you for that high bar, and I appreciate it working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anything, any last thing?
Well, I'm gonna read what I...
Oh, yourself, yeah, you have to do your thing.
Well, no, I'm all done, but I'm just gonna...
Oh, okay.
...read my, what I wrote, too. "Dr. Nancy Taylor is an exemplary superintendent, period." We know this now, right? "Dr. Taylor has led our Falmouth schools to focus on key aspects of making our schools and communities stronger: access, equity, and opportunity for all. Dr. Taylor practices what she preaches. She is a reflective leader and learner who is always learning and growing. Over the last three years, Dr. Taylor hired and supported a strong leadership team, brought the whole child to a focus, and uncovered areas where Falmouth needs to grow. Throughout all the challenges, Dr. Taylor always put the school community's best interests in the forefront, even when this wasn't the most popular decision. We are a better school system because of Dr. Taylor, and Falmouth will greatly miss you."
Thank you so much.
Okay, back to work.
We were only going to do a presentation, but I don't really see a reason that we couldn't just vote on it. If anyone would like to make a motion to just vote to accept the superintendent evaluation and that we won't have to do it at our next meeting.
I'll make them.
Someone go.
Go ahead.
I'll go motion accept.
Second?
Second.
Any last discussion? All in favor of approving the superintendent evaluation for this year?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? If we turn it down, does that mean you have to say?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
I just wanna thank the school committee because I've gotta say that I'm fortunate because I get all of your evaluations and have to look at them and compile. But you guys worked hard on those. And I know Nancy knows that, too. But I'm just, I was really impressed with your professionalism and getting them to me on time and just really your thoughts with them. So, thank you. I feel like we are, we are strong. And, you know, Nancy has helped us be strong. And we will continue this steadfast journey. And probably call on your support.
A lot.
Don't change your phone number.
Two comments. One is, I feel these three years, and I agree, I have made some unpopular decisions. But through all of that process, I feel as though the school committee has been steadfastly supportive of me as a superintendent. And I know of other superintendents who do not have the support that you have given me over the past three years. And it has been a team effort. We haven't always agreed. I've always relied on your different lenses because I'm only one person with one lens. And when we put all of the lenses together, the picture is much fuller, much clearer, and much more inclusive. So, I really wanna to thank you. It's been, it's been a pleasure to serve the school committee and certainly to serve this community. And I, it's difficult for me as well to leave. The second piece I'd like to say is, no superintendent does it by themselves. I have an incredible talented group of people here who have their own strengths and, again, have completed my picture and have made me, helped me to become the superintendent that I am. So, nobody does it alone. This is an incredibly talented team. And their support of me has also made it, made me able to do what I've been able to do over the past three years. So, nobody does it alone, and I feel as though they get as much credit as I do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now that we're all sad. I'm sorry that somebody has to follow this. We should've done this last. Next, we have our presentation on the career vocational technical education general advisory.
Why are the doors closed?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think that our more CBT-E people are out there.
Oh!
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
They just didn't wanna come in.
I'm sorry, felt locked out. Come on in. Woo! Awesome! Oh, glad the old people weren't in here before when I was crying, right?
So, girls, I think you heard us from outside. So, we're from the high school. We're CBT-E, we're the vocational school. What we have is our advisory. Every, every, every year, we have two meetings. And these are members, chairmans from the advisory. So, we have advisory members as well as teachers here. And they would like to give you a presentation of what they're doing. And we can go from there. So, let's, McDermott, you're gonna?
I can do.
You can do that? All right, without any further presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy McDermott, and I'm a retired teacher from Falmouth. I taught in the system for 29 years. And I've served on this advisory board because I think what this program is doing is bringing to all students a variety of options in their education. So, in general, there are five programs ongoing that are pathways leading to an acquisition of a skill set and saleable skills in the community as well as potential credentialing upon the completion of these five pathways. Courses are arranged in a sequence of learning building on prior experience. And Falmouth has a history in the, what was called the home economics department, of doing these progressive kinds of programs as well as industrial arts. I'm old, I can't remember what they called those programs now. So, students have an opportunity to get an introduction and to refine those skills and then practice those skills in their sequencing, which enables them to work in the community while they're going to high school as well as opens up a window of opportunity for their further education. Many students who have gone through these programs in the history of Falmouth are working in your town in boat building and in early childcare and culinary arts and various other programs. Now, the graphic artists are out there doing things in the community. And if I've forgotten anybody, please excuse me. So, anyhow, the program that I think has the longest history is the Early Childcare Education Program. And basically, they are involved in the program for three years. And these students start out with two courses in child development, which enables them to get a broad understanding of growth and development as well as emotional and social understanding of children. And then they apply that after qualifying for the childcare aid program by interview with a teacher as well as their grade qualifications to participate in our preschool. And that opportunity gives them hands-on experience with children, observation skills that they use to build their curriculum in the preschool. And the state is, is very interested, as well as I think our superintendent, in putting four-year-olds in preschool programming. We've done it in Title I programs historically here as well as in integrated programs for special students. So, one of the goals of this particular program is to expand so that the childcare aid program could offer a full-day childcare program so that the children could stay a full day. If that happens, then Nancy Fitzgerald is only one person, and so we would have to hire an additional teacher to make that happen. Luckily, with the Chapter 74 and the Perkins Grant money for all of the programs that assists with some of the needs of the, each individual programming. I think you spoke of, who is the shopperson?
Hi, Amy. What's up, teacher?
With your laser something, something.
Yeah, we recently got a laser engraver, which is really gonna allow us to customize the kids' projects through fundraising. This year, we're actually building 30 cutting boards for the Falmouth Road Race, so we're gonna laser engrave those with the Falmouth High school insignia. And those are gonna be gifts to the people that house the Elite Runners. So, with the additional tools in the shop, we have the ability to expand the program, the curriculum, and fundraiser.
So, that's an overview. So, if you have questions and some of the experts who are teaching the programs may like to speak to their particular program.
And their advisors.
And their advisors. And we have parents here. And no students, but we have students on our advisory board as well. So, questions?
Yeah, I would, I would love to hear what we have for CBT-E.
Me, too.
What the different programs are.
So, good.
Can each of you give us a 30 seconds?
My name's James Brooks. I'm the woodworking teacher at the high school. This is my sixth year at the high school. We have a pathway from intro, which is just to learn the safety and the operation of the tools, to an advanced class where we make cutting boards, aderondach chairs. We have a large fundraiser with both of those projects. Then I, the last two years, I've added the construction systems class, which we're really trying to mirror the vocational education at upper K Tech, which we build glorified mockups of sheds. And then we end up building an eight-by-12 shed. Moving forward next year, I'd like to get my higher-level students, my seniors, into an independent study and really take on larger projects like the Falmouth Road Race, cutting boards, and, you know, larger projects like a gazebo that might go at the school or, you know, some kinda dream project like that. So, we really appreciate your support with vocational programming and trying to mirror vocational education.
James is also with the woodworking. He's also redoing the sheds and the greenhouses out back so that we can extend that program. So, James is also doing that. Forgot to mention that. That's happening this year.
Do you have a question for him?
I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Brooks, I have a question. What is your fundraiser for cutting boards and aderondach chairs?
So...
Are you wanting to order?
Maybe. Maybe I am.
I should have a school committee email where I can put all this out to you guys.
It's public domain.
I'd love to show off what we do at the high school.
That'd be great.
Right before Christmas time, right about October 1st, moving into Christmas time, we make exotic cutting boards. We use many different species of wood. We glue them up. The kids go through the process of milling a board from, you know, would be a rough-sawn piece of material to a finished cutting board. Recently, I provided Mrs. St. Julian with a really nice cutting board and engraved it for him.
Very nice. Mrs. St. Julian likes that, by the way.
Right. So, we do those. And we also do aderondach chairs, which are just starting up right now. So, if anyone's doing an aderondach chair. My kids do two rounds of chairs. They build their own chair, and they get all their mistakes out on their own chair. And then we do another round of chairs, which is more of assembly line techniques. And I'll tell four or five kids, "You're on this tool today or this week," and they can kind of understand assembly line and factory work or however you might wanna look at it.
When will those be available for purchase?
I'll send out an email tomorrow.
Great. That would be wonderful. We all want on that list.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Andrea.
Can I just follow up on the fundraiser?
Sure.
And those funds are used for...
So, we have student accounts at the high school. So, all that money goes back into the revolving account. And that allows me to buy bits and blades and sandpaper and really stock up the shop so that we have, you know, new and efficient tools for all the students to use.
Saves on the school budget.
We have some advisors. Would you like Smith and Mr. Cusman?
I just had one more question for you.
Sure.
Where do you get your lumber from?
I get my lumber from Wood Lumber, and I get my lumber from Falmouth Lumber.
Good answer. Thank you.
My name is John Schmidt. I'm a parent. I'm also married to a teacher, and I'm also a professional in the field. I represent the culinary field. I'm helping out Ms. Happy, who just had twins, so she asked me to see what I could do. So, here we go.
Thanks.
Just quickly, I've been for 40 years, I've been in the kitchen for 40 years, so I've been in the kitchen my whole life. What, this is my second advisory meeting here, and I was asked to join in the first one, the one, the last one, although I was honored and went into the meeting from there. What I've seen, when I first went into the meeting, they answered a lot of questions. I've had some of your Falmouth students come through the kitchens that I've worked at. I'm a chef over at Cape Cod Senior Residence. I've been there six years, and we've had a few students come in there. And the skills that I've seen come in, you know, teaching the students what they need to know to start the kitchen. If they don't go on to college, if they don't go on into 4C's, they have some of the basic skills that we need right off the go. Knife safety, food safety, especially the food safety training, they're coming with that certificate. That is huge. It's required. It's huge. It's coming in with that, the knowledge how to work around the kitchen. The knowledge how to work around the kitchen. Safety more than anything else is what we're seeing, which is huge. I can't tell you how many people come in that don't know how to use a knife properly or the foods. Again, I keep going back to food safety. You just can't emphasize that enough. The training on the basic cooking, it's fabulous. They're coming with the knowledge and some knowledge of baking. Overall, they have a good knowledge. And I learned today that we have some students who are doing some TA-ing, which is wonderful, that they're actually leading a group within the kitchen. So, they're gonna be coming in knowing how to work in a department, knowing some leadership skills, which is huge. You don't see that. And they're gonna be, get the nervousness out of them, which is huge. We're not seeing that. We are gonna talk about trying to get some allergy training, which is required. That's important. Choke safety, CPR, of course, that's something that's still in the works, but it's gonna, we are talking about that. The fire, there was someone from the fire department who was in the birthing class with Ms. Hackett, who's willing to come in and treat, teach fire safety, which I, when I first came to the meeting, I was like, this is, we need to have fire safety first and foremost. And that's, again, it's safety, safety, safety in the kitchen. I've been in the kitchen fire. We had the safety, we knew what to do. And that's, that's huge. The TAs do the most, most of the cooking demos. We're hoping to have some interns go out, some of the students do some internship out in the community, work around with the, I'm gonna use the wrong term, with the food bank, but it's not the food bank, it's the Help Me With Us.
Service center.
Service center, thank you. Doing the community meals, maybe get some internship within local restaurants here, which would be great. The one thing we have to watch for, again, there's always an age safety thing of 18 or on different, there's so many different regulations, I can't even tell you about them. I don't know half of them, but I know the basics of those.
And they are helping with the cooking for Fresh Market?
Yes, that was, I can remember, it's Fresh Market. They are helping with that and they're very, very grateful for the help in that. We are looking, the one thing that came up at today's meeting, which I think is great, is that trying to, we, there's some greenhouses out behind Falmouth College and they're working to try and get a fountain table curriculum going. So, they're gonna be cooking, they're gonna be raising the produce there that they'll be using in the culinary class.
That, that we wrote, Caitlin and I wrote a grant, FEF grant, so we're waiting to hear on that.
And as a chef, I said, the first thing I said to that is, these students, when they taste what's been grown in the garden and brought into the house, they're gonna appreciate the flavor. I don't have much more to say. Is there any questions?
Thank you. That was great. That was a great question.
What's the holdup on the CPR being in the works? What do you need?
Well, we, all right, so my kids are CPR trained already. All my seniors get CPR trained. We're trying to get Caitlin's group into the same type of thing. Perkins actually pays for my kids to go and hopefully next year Caitlin's group will be included in that CPR training.
When I say CPR, I'm also, I should have been more, I'm including choke safety in the kitchen itself, so I don't, they probably match together or two separate programs.
That's included in basic BLS, yep.
But that's part of the Perkins grant. It covers that CPR training for the kids.
Excellent. Thank you.
And we look forward, coming into the kitchen with more certificates, the better off you are.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andrea, do you have something? You're good? Anyone else? What other program do we not hear from?
So, I'm Jan Rocha and we are, and this is Mike Kasperian.
Can one of you come up so we can actually, because we need the mic to pick you up?
Sure, so I'm Mike Kasperian and I work with Ms. Rocha. I'm president of Falmouth Chamber and part of our interest in this is, of course, is getting businesses involved. So, started off as business technology, we're now transitioning into business marketing. And there's a few reasons for that. And maybe you could talk a little bit about the granting of them involved.
Right, so, one of the many discussions we had is how can we expand the offering of business courses with having one business teacher? So, we tried to get creative and we talked about the need for sort of an intro level course, because right now, we currently have an accounting course, a personal finance course, an employability skills course, and an internship program that I coordinate. So, we talked about Principles of Business Marketing and Finance and we included it on the course registration form this year and we received 105 requests, which is huge. So, it kind of gives us a little bit of a sense of, you know, there is a demand out there and an interest. So, I am planning to survey them. We talked about it. One of our other advisory council members said we should survey and find out what was it about that course that drove them to register for it, because that might tell us, you know, a little something. So, we're going to introduce that course. I was planning to introduce it next spring. Apparently, it looks like I might be teaching three sections of it instead of one and that's fine. So, we, our discussion is how do we, how do we, again, develop this pathway and provide courses that the kids are interested in? So, we're really kind of in the process of doing, we're still in the process of doing that, but that's our first big change.
Yeah, one of the unique things here in Falmouth is, you know, most of the businesses are one to three employees. So, we're really moving into an entrepreneurship or entrepreneurial kind of spirit. And the opportunity here for the students to partner with the businesses is tremendous. And we've had great success with Career Day, Credit to Life Fair. So, the Chamber and the businesses has really, have really been working with the schools for many years now. And the kids really thrive and just the difference when they go in and they see the difference between working for a big business in Falmouth, which is, say, the Black Dog, that has multiple locations, as opposed to Eight Cousins, that's, you know, totally entrepreneurial. And they see that all retail is not the same. And we've talked about things like DECA and, you know, doing some more internships and getting more people involved, because again, I think as Ms. Rocha pointed out, she's a one-woman department and, you know, what can the business community do really to give back and support and manpower, because that's really the responsibility of the business community. We think that, you know, going forward and giving these students an opportunity to really experience entrepreneurship and prepare them a little bit, particularly if they want to stay here on Cape Cod. Some of the things we were talking about today, one thing is, you know, this mindset of, I'm gonna go to college, I'm gonna get out, I'm gonna get a job working for a company and that I may like or I may not like, except to pay back my student loans. But at what point do students understand that you can turn your hobby or what you love into the way you make your living? And how do you instill that entrepreneurial student, spirit into people? And I think one of the best ways of doing that is getting them partnered up with true entrepreneurs and Falmouth is rich with that.
And going along with that, we also talked, and we, our advisories, the teachers in the building, we talk about integrating with each other, you know? Tim's got, you know, a web class that he can maybe work with my kids. We talked about maybe putting a school store, you know, making it online and accessible so that we have kids doing the web development piece, we have kids doing the marketing piece, accounting. There's lots of different ways that we can all integrate, you know, and the graphics program. So, we're constantly brainstorming and trying to think of ways that we can continue to develop our pathways, but yet not in silos. How do we kind of play off each other's skill sets and different expertise along with the business community? And we expect the internship program to continue to grow as well, because we do have a lot of students that go out into many different kinds of internships, but once the pathways are developed and they're, they're become known in the, with the students, I, we think that we'll see more students wanting to do, you know, go through the, you know, Jim's program and then maybe go out and do some kind of a construction internship or a culinary internship. So, I'm excited about it. Any questions?
Any questions on business? Awesome.
Thank you.
Do you want to, for, for this programming, I'm Tim Aris, I'm the programming and web development teacher. So, basically, we're almost through phase one, which is like a, three years ago, these programs were well established, probably more than three years ago. My program is fair, or our program is fairly new. I basically was the first teacher at Falmouth High School that taught programming and web development. And so, phase one to me was always expose the kids, because I know it's a, I know it's a district priority to expand our computer science knowledge, especially within the district and outside the district especially. I mean, what, a million jobs every year are being filled, so we need to do that. And CBT will help us fill at least some of those jobs before they go to college. For example, like web development, if anyone knows how to make a webpage in here, it's, you guys probably think it's, you might think it's really tough. It's really not that tough. Something that a high school kid could probably do his junior or senior year. Actually, I went to school with a kid who made a living doing web development in high school. He bought like a bright yellow Saturn, uh, Saturn view or something like that. So, anyways, it's definitely, it's definitely applicable. But anyways, obviously, the problem, people who take the course probably are going to continue on it and hopefully in some capacity in collegiate level, whether that be, whether it could be a computer science major or whether it be something else that they're doing. I mean, every industry that we have in the world uses a computer, so they should probably know how to program it. In terms of what we're doing at Falmouth High School, we offer four classes right now. The four classes, the same four classes that we taught when we came in here. And now, we're in the process of redeveloping those classes, because if you didn't know this, technology goes obsolete. I heard one of these stats, I don't know, a while ago, that said, by the time a college freshman graduates high school with a computer science major, his half the stuff that he or she learned is gonna be obsolete. So, that's what we're doing right now. We expose the kids, the seats are getting filled, having fun, and it's been a success. But now, it's cranking it up a little bit. And that goes with the district priority of expanding our offerings a little bit to the lower levels, whether it be in seventh and eighth grade, fifth and sixth grade. As that base, as that base level knowledge expands to lower classes, we'll be able to do more at the high school. For example, like Jan, she talked about doing a school store. Really, that's a really like good hands-on assignment that. We don't really have to have a lot of security issues tied in with internships, like within the community, but it's something that the kids can get a tangible, hands-on experience that they can use outside of Falmouth High School. Other things that we're talking about, if you guys went to the science fair, a number of the students that we have in computer science classes, they did a lot of computer science projects, whether it's machine learning, whether it's, I mean, ninth grade levels. Mr. Jim Dohmans, he's our chairman. It's, they're taking what we're teaching in the class and now they're expanding it. So, that's like phase two for me. It's expanded it in the school, whether it's Jan's program, whether it's the science department, whether it's through the history department, taking old whaling records and doing machine learning algorithms. Basically, just instead of hand typing everything, letter by letter by letter, we put it in front of a camera, we scan it and it puts it in for us. That's the cross-curricular stuff we want to do next. And CBT obviously gives us a fund, gives us a pathway to do that and makes life easier for the most part. So, any questions?
Awesome. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Awesome. Oh, this is, sorry. Please.
I just wanna, if that's, that's it, I just wanna mention, wrap things up, that say that this, this group here is trying to teach all students. Really, as you can see, the expanse between, from early childhood to just, it's an opportunity for all students to, to experience it. And if we had some students here, a lot of students are experiencing multiple areas and so that's huge. And I love about this committee is that it's timely, because we have people from the workforce telling our students what the skills needed. So, I love that, that that's what's going on here, that it's timely, it's knowledgeable. And then, we would like to come here each year and really keep you updated what we're doing and take it to the next level. We really want to start thinking, not just right now, but we want to take it to the next level and expand it and we'd love to hear from you as well. But we want to make sure the kids, when they come to school, they have an opportunity, definitely go to college, but definitely career-based and go from there. So, that's our group.
Awesome. You have a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what it looks like for a student's schedule? Like, how do you fit in CBT classes? What does that look like for?
Very good. We have that question already. We have the question.
I will answer that.
Okay.
Okay, so, my, my class takes probably the most time next to Jan's, because of the internship that we work as well. So, what happens is that every student in the high school is supposed to get rid of all academic supports and that's gonna happen by the time we're, our next accreditation round. That, we were told to get rid of them the last time, so we really need to get rid of them by the next time, which is two years out. So, what happens is, you know, normally speaking, if you talk to any kids at the high school, most of the kids have at least one period a day that they're in an academic support. Now, some kids will choose not to do that. They will take the other, another class. And so, that's how they were able to fit in all of the vocational side of it. They do have to rearrange their schedule. The only complication that most of us run into are music classes, because those are set times. So, that the students that are in music programs have a little bit more trouble trying to fit us in, but all of their schedules, they have all of what they need. Like, I, I have, you know, National Honor Society kids in my program as everybody else does and then you have kids that are really just looking to develop, you know, a skill. So, there's all different levels, but most kids have extra time in their, in their day because we work on a six-day schedule, rotating schedule, so that there is always time to fit those things in, even after the, the English and the math and the history and the foreign language and whatever else they need. And that's with, like, you know, my seniors, I have kids that are taking three and four AP classes and still doing my internship. So, it fits, it's just if they, if the student really wants a specific pathway, they, we figure out how to make it work for them.
And we'll work with all the kids. We had a girl that does music choir and, you know, we found a way. And so, freshman year, it is tough, because they have all these mandatory classes, but by senior, they know where they're heading for and we'll always find, yeah, we're willing to do, and we'll always find a way.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I heard people mentioning the Perkins.
Yes.
That seems to impact this a good deal. Do you foresee that that's gonna stay with your program for a while?
Right now, the Perkins grant has, federal grant, and it's been running between 23,000 to 27,000 per year. And that's been stable between that, that amount. And if we're, and right now, we are going through a process of, not re-creditation, but just review, application. And so, we do well and we continue, this is what we're trying to make sure, that we build our, our programs well so that we can have that continue.
Have they given you an inclination as to how many years they'll be on board with you?
We can, we can turn that.
Perkins has been around for a long time. We had it way back, you know, and then we dropped it for a while and then Sonia, we upped us two years.
Couple years ago.
Three years ago. We don't, I don't foresee Perkins disappearing. It's, it's been around forever. So, you know, it's just a matter of how much we get every year, you know? And obviously, the more students that we enroll in the programs and the better our pathways are and the certifications that come out from it, the better it is for us to receive more funds. That's, I mean, that's what they're coming to see, that our pathways make sense and, you know, the students are, they'll interview us as well as our students to make sure that the students are actually, you know, learning what they're supposed to be learning.
Over time, it's been stable. It's just that they can, the criteria can change on what you can spend the Perkins money on.
Right.
That's, that's the place where it gets just a little bit sticky.
Yeah.
But I think it has been stable, but they can change the criteria anytime they want. Yeah.
Actually, this is for Patrick with Chapter 70. So, CBT, students who are in CBT, we do get some extra funds.
So, the funny thing is, you were just, you were reading my mind.
Okay.
I was writing a note to make a call to DESI to try to get that calculation about how CBT affects the, the Chapter 70 equation, so.
I actually have that number.
You have the equation?
No, I have the, I have the number that they just were saying for fifth year, 18.
Oh, yeah, I have the Chapter 70. I'm, I'm interested in the equation.
Okay.
To see how that, how that, that's the increment that I'm interested in, right?
But that's an interesting.
Yes.
Piece that, you know, so we also get, having students enrolled in these programs also brings more funding through Chapter 70. So, you know, there are other funding sources that we get that might not be necessarily always earmarked, but that brings to our district that we can support students.
So, I have a question. So, in addition to dreaming about making, not dreaming, but working on making these pathways So in addition to dreaming about making, not dreaming, but working on making these pathways more robust, are there also dreams for other pathways?
Oh.
And what they would be.
Robotics?
I would love to see a robotics program at the high school. I think with our facility is outstanding. When I got the job at Falmouth High School, the woodshop is a tremendous, tremendous facility. I think we have opportunity, we have the facility. It really, you know, we're all one man or woman programs. I'm the only woodshop teacher. Nancy's the only child, you know, we're the only, we're one man band. So by extending our own programs, I think that's going to just lead to extending more programs down the line.
Right.
But I think our relationship with HOE and the robotics program and the ROP club out there at school is a lot of opportunities there.
That's, that's what our Perkins funding or our, 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 as with the web development and programming is going to this year is going to the robotics program, to build a robotics program because, so the kids want, and that's, I mean, that's what the, I mean, we meet with people throughout the community, part of our, big, large part of our community is the HOE community, and, I mean, that would be, the more practice they have in school, the more they may be able to help out HOE. That's another internship, get out and making, I mean, not just learning, but actually like doing something with it, applying the learning. That's, I mean, that's my role here, right?
Yeah. Any other? I'm just curious what, what dreams there are.
Well, one of the dreams that I think we all have, I mean, we have the ability to service more students with more faculty. But that's a dream we realize, and unfortunately, Perkins can't pay for anyone, any staffing. If you get the Chapter 74 grant again, maybe, but that's, you know, but that's, I think, what we're all feeling frustrated with. There's a lot we could do, each and every one of us, but like Jim said, we're all our own one-man band, so it's, it's hard to expand. We have the student body that wants to expand. I turn kids away every single year. I have to. I can't, I cannot juggle anymore walls. I just can't. And so that's one of the problems is our classes are full, but we can only take so many into an internship program and beyond.
I have a student who's at advisory today for the graphics program. I teach an intro CAD class. He's going to Roger Williams next year for architecture, and he was a senior, and I just had him for the, you know, the first half of the year. So we can add onto that program, you know, technical drawing, CAD program. There are many different avenues that we can use our facility at the school.
The internship program, we want to make sure we do. I'd like to see more seniors go out in the community and try these skills out. And one more, which I believe that we are in the, on the paperwork online to do, but we want to make sure that our pathways are recognized by the community colleges. We're in articulation, so the kids can actually take those classes, and all of a sudden, they'll be having six or eight credits. So that's our, that's our big one. It's going to be on the, on the pathways. It's on the agenda? We're in the, we're in the list. We're in the list. We're on the list. So that's our big dream, that the kids come out with college credits.
Are there certifications for all the programs?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
Everyone has a different. Is there certification for those programs? Is there then a final assessment or a test that a student then works to obviously get a certification? Is there any follow-up or assessment at the end for the certification?
Each one's different.
Whether they receive it?
Or just, because they take X amount of courses.
Right.
Are they going to then qualify for the certification, or is there an assessment at the end in order to qualify for that certification?
It depends on each.
It depends on each program. For example, the students that go through my pathway will come out with state certification to teach early childhood.
Got you.
So that's if they make the grade.
Right.
There are assessments that we have to do for, for Perkins, but also for my program, and the graphics program has to do it for Chapter 74. There are like extensive evaluations that we have to do for the students. They then have to, like mine, for example, has to have, they have to have their, they have to graduate from high school, they have to send their transcripts, they have to send a letter of recommendation from myself. All of that has to be in place for them to get their certification.
That's more of a cumulative over time, where mine would be the OSHA 10 course, which they do have an assessment, but it's computer-based and it's all based in safety, and that's over a shorter amount of time than, say, Nancy's where it's an entire year.
Right. And then Caitlin does.
SERV.
That's, I think it's five years, and it's the same, whether you're getting it in school or getting it in the field, it's the same test. It's good, recognized. I think once they've got to recognize SERV because they have their own program, but it's recognized as a national program.
Okay. Thank you.
One quick more thing.
Yeah.
Mike, what does the process look like as far as getting the businesses in the community involved? Do they come to you? Do you have certain ones you go to?
That's yours.
That's yours.
So as I tell the kids that come to me for internships, they, they say, do you have a list? If they want a list presented, and I say, no, let's talk about what your interest is. So I click call, I'll call anybody, but they tell, they can tell me it's no. Michael's been a great partner as well, businesses through the Chamber, and just, and I'm doing it for 10 years, so I've kind of built a base of businesses, but every semester, I'll have somebody that wants something that we haven't done before. And I just, I'll just call.
Just curious what, what the businesses knew, if they would, maybe some don't know it's even an option, you know?
One thing we can add to that, too, for those of you who may not know, Janet also is on the board of directors of the Chamber of Commerce, which is pretty huge to have the representation from the schools. So it all functions in events. She's there talking to people and getting to meet business owners and business leaders on a one-on-one basis, which is huge. And I think it's opened a lot of doors to a lot of these internship programs and all. So it's really important, I think, that the school is represented on that board because it's such a vital part of the community. And it's all that back, you know, back and forth, and just, just my networking comes together.
Good. Excellent. Thank you so much for coming. This was amazing. I can't, oh, sorry, John.
And related to Megan's question, you know, with regards to specific Seacrest, we'd be all in for any kind of programs like this. And what we're doing currently, working directly with Mary Gans, we're setting up a job expo tour on site, and we're going to go department by department with kids. And we actually have four kids that have signed up that are very wanting to go and already have it set up that we're going to do next week, where they're going to go department by department, and the individual department's going to address, you know, what it is, like Michael had said, for, with the ultimate goal to say, hey, here's jobs that you can have in hospitality and whatnot on the Cape, even if not necessarily at Seacrest, at other places, and going either in the restaurant or in the housekeeping, in the front desk area, in the accounting, and all of our different department managers are geared up for that and are excited because we want to have this be an annual thing to kind of get kids to stay in Falmouth.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's excellent.
I just have a quick question. Has there been any requests for other programs that are not spoke up here tonight or that you already have in process, other than the robotics program that Mr. Maderas talked about? Has there been any?
Well, interior design, fashion design, we used to have a sewing and fashion design program, but we, I, I, we lost me. We lost me to building up the other program. So we have sewing machines, and we used to have an art, we used to collaborate with the art program and do a textile course and all of that, and unfortunately, we don't have the person to actually do it anymore. So that's one that a lot of kids, fashion design and interior design, but that goes along with the architecture that, you know, we don't have that, and, you know, so there are things that kids want that we aren't able to provide yet. Historically, Falmouth High School had at least three teachers in each, in the shop. There were three, there were three in the home act department. There were five in business. And so with all the retirees, there were no replacements, and now you have these staunch five who are holding, holding all the walls in the air.
So if I may, two, one question to be spun off the fashion and interior design. I know that there is a long-term night school teacher who happens to have a degree in fashion design, who.
Yes, I know that person.
As, as do I remarkably. I don't know if anybody has reached out or encouraged some of those students that are interested in that to take her night sewing, because she would be an excellent resource Wednesday nights.
Yeah, we have. I actually, kids that have come to me, I have suggested just that, that, you know, there is, you know, night, we can't, we aren't doing it here, but, you know, you could take it in the night school and.
Right.
Yeah, and so we are leading kids, anytime we can find a way, like even Janet, if their kid wants architecture, you know, she's, fits them up with somebody that's an architect. So, I mean, we try to get what the kids want and place them where they, they can learn the most.
So one thing I haven't heard is anything in the healthcare profession, and Cape Cod Healthcare is the largest employer in Cape Cod.
That was, that was, you just hit it. That was the other one we discussed actually today was that we really needed to start another shop in healthcare.
We do have a lot of interns.
Yes.
We placed a lot of interns over the last, really, well, over, like I said, all 10 years, but over the last probably three years, really ramped up. And so another, another program, it's not part of the CBT, but that fills that need, is we have established a job shadowing program. It's called Med Start with Falmouth Hospital. And so three times a year, three times a year on half-days, kids will sign up juniors to go over and job shadow for three hours. And I meet with the individual, and then I work with Dr. Plyler and a couple of other people over at the hospital, and we match the kids with their area of specialty. So they get to go over for a three-hour job shadow. And if they want to repeat it the next session, and there's enough room, we let them repeat. I currently have an intern in DR right now, and I've had them all at the hospital. So we are getting, you know, trying to fill the need in that respect, but not as far as a program.
So with the summer coming up, I would encourage any students to sign up for the volunteers, and it doesn't just have to be at Falmouth Hospital, it could also be at, you know, the JML. Cape Cod Hospital isn't so far away, you know, there are other opportunities as well, but that is a sustainable profession, that you could stay here on the Cape and, you know, do whatever, from housekeeping all the way up to, you know, we do cardiac surgery every day. So just things to think about to hopefully spark an interest.
Oh, God, we're never going to meet them. Sorry.
Keep it, these, all these people here.
And I just, I, from what I've been hearing with all these great programs, that there's student interest, there's all those pieces there, it's the teachers, it's the human beings that is going to be the, what's going to stop us from being able to grow the way that you guys want to grow. And I know that the Falmouth VIPS, the volunteer program, has a big track with careers. I know Janet works very closely with the office there, but that, maybe that's something that we can look into to bolster a little bit more of what you're doing because without having the humans there to do this, you guys can't, you're just going to burn yourselves out.
Well, I would say not only VIPS, but also the, our volunteers here, the advisors that are here, getting more people from the business field coming in and advising us, I think that helps us as well. So I appreciate everyone that's here, that's, I appreciate my teachers, too, but definitely the volunteers as well.
You did.
I did, I did.
Or someone did.
I, it was me. Anyway, but I definitely thank you for allowing, and we hope to come back yearly, probably in the fall, to just give you an update of what's going on.
I think that would be great.
It would be great.
You can see, we have so much interest.
I know, I know.
In these programs, so.
We'll make sure it's short.
Yeah.
We'd be free to come by the woodshop.
Thanks. Don't forget to send email.
I got email. I got you.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. All right, moving forward. First read on policies. Homeschool policy and revised student policy, the long list for the nondiscrimination clauses to meet standards. Do we mean?
The only thing I would, I would call to your attention is number two, revise the policies regarding homelessness and including homelessness. We're going through our CPR coordinated program review right now, and I would ask that you spend time on that so that when we bring it back, we can move on that. We need to update those policies quickly.
So the one question I had on that one is, so does this now make all of our, because we have this, these statements on lots of things. I think they're in the handbooks, and they're on that thing that all people that are sending home flyers to all of the kids in the schools, they all, so are we now make, will they all be updated to say homelessness as well?
They should. Yes, yes. We're using our tool.
Sonia's tool.
Sonia's tool. We volunteered, you weren't there that time, remember? No, it's the word search, all that.
So not just the policies, though, but the procedural.
Every, every single place that this issue is addressed, where we want the same sentence, same, all the same words.
The same cadence.
Yep.
But not just in policy, also in actual application.
To out the district.
Right. Be clear.
And we are, and we're finding new ones as we go along. These were found as part of our record review for our CPI. So they came back and said, fix it so you're not cited.
Right.
So that's why there is a sense of urgency.
Thank you.
Because this is a federal thing that just didn't happen when the language changed.
Yeah, but this ties to us then looking at everything and making sure everything's aligning with that clause, and we were able to get the clause, and now, you know, even when we look at these policies right now, we see that they don't all match, but.
Right, that's what I was.
We're just trying to be consistent.
So I think what, what I would suggest is this with this JFBB that we have, that be the same clause of all the others, because right now, it has ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap. It has some other things in there, but if we add that clause about, or any other class protected by federal, state, or local law, we're covering those areas. So I just, I would like to see, if we're going to look at these three right now, that we have a consistent clause for that.
Any other questions on these? We'll vote on them not today. We'll vote on them next time.
This is just the first read, right?
And then.
Put out there, within regards to those that they did cut off because of the coordinated program review, but one thing that we were sort of discussing and cautioning is that we will be revising this based just on that language. We haven't reviewed the entire policy.
Right.
So when we're voting on that and we're putting a revision, we may even want to add something parenthetically, that it's related to just that language, so that no one is thinking that that entire policy.
Oh, like in the future.
Has been.
Right, right, right.
It was just because this was such a time-sensitive piece, that we haven't had the opportunity to review the entire policy.
It's literally a Band-Aid. So that, like Charlie said, we do not come under review.
Sure. And the home education program one, I have one question about it.
Sure.
Do the kids, oh, am I stirring the pot? I'm sorry.
Yes.
It doesn't say whether or not the kids that do all of this have to actually live in Falmouth.
Well, we did talk about that, so.
Oh, wait, no, home-based environment within Falmouth, does that mean that they have to be?
Residents.
Residents. That just wasn't clear to me when I read it the first time.
It ties to Falmouth residents.
Yeah, we definitely add, we added that in.
Educated in a home-based environment within Falmouth.
Do we know at this point in time how many students are involved with the homeschool or home education?
We did have that question.
I don't know the number off the head.
I'm, I'm just curious, could you check on that, Charlie? I appreciate that. I, because I look at this and I, obviously, parent teaching or a designee, and then the certificate, you know, just the competency.
I would say, and this is really off my head, 40 to 50, maybe more, but that.
Okay.
Because they do send progress reports.
Yes.
I want to say in the course of the year, it might be around there. I might be totally off, but that's.
The number is increasing, though? Is it increasing, the number?
No.
No?
No.
This is vetted by legal with regards to limited to Falmouth. So in other words, if they, if a student is a school choice student from Mashpee and then is.
So in other words, if a student is a school choice student from Mashpee and then is coming to Falmouth, and then they, for some reason, need to go on the homeschool thing, is that okay then that we're saying it's within Falmouth only?
They have to be homeschooled in their...
In their hometown. So they left the Falmouth Public Schools as an enrolled student and went to homeschooling, they would homeschool in their hometown.
Okay. I just want to make sure that phrase, that's really an important phrase.
It's just a residential thing.
I just, I also want to bring up the fact that we don't get any funds for these students. So they are homeschooled, they're not part of our school system. So I think that's also something to look at, is of those students, when you find that number, how many actually come into our schools for specials or other activities?
Two.
Yeah, not many.
Okay.
Okay, so you know how many?
Two.
Yeah, so that's just an interesting thing to look at as, you know, as we go forward with kind of some legislation pieces, too, and looking at Chapter 70 funding. If, you know, we're providing services for students who are being homeschooled, you know, should there be some compensation through, like Chapter 70?
We really don't. The only place where it becomes, I'm not gonna say an issue, is even though they may be homeschooled, they still have a right to special education services if they are eligible for them. And so that's where we then have to work around the regulations around that. We really, within our 40 to 50, we have currently actually none who are receiving services. Some that do, that are in private schools, which as Falmouth residents, they are eligible for those services. That we do have some students, but not our homeschool folks. They have to, as part of the application, submit a proposed curriculum that my office then submits to the curriculum office. And Sonia signs off for secondary and Zach for elementary. And then they have to send the quarterly progress reports.
Tom?
Is there, Charlie, is there any, can we learn anything from the folks that are doing homeschooling? Is there any kind of theme amongst the folks that are doing homeschooling and stuff that they're doing that maybe something we can take advantage of?
I wouldn't say that. I would say if I were to look at one of the trends now than even previous years, it's a lot of online programs. So there, for example, we have one, one student where it's a Christian-based online curriculum. And that's important to them. So we're seeing a lot more of, you know, online schools, so to speak, or programs, but being done at the home. And that's that, we're seeing just more and more of.
There are more, yeah. All right, so we will come back to these at our next meeting to actually vote on them, but not today. Next, we've got Routine Business, The Minutes from March 13th. Do you have a motion to accept The Minutes from the 13th, March 9?
March 13th.
13th?
Mine says March 9.
The actual, oh, is that a typo? The minutes were from the 13th. Oh, wait. Are they?
4/9.
Okay. These are the, wait, is it from the 13th, though? No, this was our last meeting. This is the 9th. So there's a typo. So changing the top of the, the header to April 9, 2018. Sorry. Text is right. Thing is wrong, but we're good.
Another motion.
Okay.
So the vote for the field was not unanimous. I was not fishing for it.
Where is it?
The first.
Oh, the first one.
First vote.
Yes, one opposed. Actually, can we get a motion on this first?
I'll make a motion to approve The Minutes with the edit of 4/9, not March 13th.
Okay.
2018.
And a second on that?
Excuse me, wasn't April 9th the town meeting?
Yes, that's this one.
This long thing was that?
Yeah.
Yes.
That isn't where we voted for the thing. That was the meeting before.
No, we voted that year. You're right.
It was the new language. We voted it at town.
We voted it, yes.
Oh, but you were...
She was opposed both times.
Both times. Okay, I thought it, I know. I thought that, never mind. I got the meetings mixed up.
Okay, can we get a second?
I'm, sorry.
Thanks. Okay. So then we have the one correction that Andrea has on the turf field. Are there any other corrections? Okay. So we've got two edits, all in favor of approving The Minutes from April 9th with the two edits.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, great. I don't usually have this all attached, now I have to flip back and forth. Next, report from the superintendent.
I just have three quick points. The status of the food service director position, that's in process, and I will keep you updated as we move forward on that. I'd like you to pay attention to the VIPS Director's Report from Tracy Krego. And just lastly, that Tim McLaughlin and I support a Gay-Straight Alliance at Morse Pond School that Janine Kelly has started.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions for Nancy? Report from the Directors.
Cindy Tugus had a family issue. She was at a funeral today. And Zach Wadker had mouth surgery, so he was also out.
Sonia, anything you'd like to highlight?
No, thank you, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Sonia? I love quotes and quotes, it's awesome. Thank you for doing that. And we have Zach's report and Cindy's report, and I know everybody else was out because it was vacation, and you should be on vacation. So that's awesome. Report from the Chair. I have a couple things. Make sure you have on your calendar for our next meeting, the 8th, that we have executive session starting at 5:30, because that's a lot earlier than we usually are. And then the meeting after that starts at 5:00. So we have two early meetings in a row. That meeting is at the Kunamsetet, because right afterward is the VIPS dinner. And that leads into the next thing. You have your invitation, if you can send that down to Walter, your invitation to the VIPS dinner, and you can get your tickets at falmouthvips.org. And then the only other thing is that parking fees discussion keeps getting bumped because our meetings are so incredibly full, but we are definitely doing it at our next meeting on the 8th. So if you have questions or concerns, if we can collect them before that meeting, so we can actually have answers at that meeting. Does that make sense? Instead of holding questions, because we've talked about it a little bit already, so if you already know you're gonna have certain questions or things that you want to know ahead of time, if we could send them to me or Nancy, Pat, where do you want them from?
You can send them to me.
Okay, send them to Nancy.
And Patrick and I.
So that we can have information, so we can actually talk about it that night, so we don't bump it again. And that's all I've got.
So you said 5:30 on May 8th?
5:30 on the 8th and 5:00 on the 22nd. 5:00, right, Sharon?
And then that's the VIPS after that.
On the 22nd. Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Just because I know it gets, it's starting to, it's getting crazy. Walter, what you got?
I had two things. I don't know how many of you people saw the write-up in the Enterprise about the Vote Yes Committee. This is something that the Recreation Committee has taken really a great initiative on. I know I'm on the Recreation Committee and I got them involved early on. And now they're talking about not only promoting the field, but actually having signs made up. So they took a step in that direction. And it was a nice article on the front page of the Enterprise last week. And so the other thing I wanted to mention is it's not too early to start thinking about this, but when that vote comes up on the 15th, we're gonna need every vote we can possibly get. Because as we've discussed before, we're probably gonna have some skeptics who don't have kids in the program and could care less about the importance to the school and the importance of having that field out there. And we need to get all the people that we can to vote for it. So if you know of...
But as, as a committee, we cannot support a ballot measure. So we can't, we shouldn't even be talking about it in a public meeting because it's against the law.
My point is, if you know, if you know of neighbors, relatives that are gonna vote, you need to start telling them to vote yes on that issue.
But if you're doing that, it is as an individual, not as a school committee member, because it is against the law for us to publicly support a ballot item.
Well, I think it's important to the school committee that that field get done.
It is, but it's against the law. So just trying to cover our bases. Any other things coming up or, John?
Committee report from the Collaborative, but also an agenda item, I'm glad that you mentioned, because we talked about the parking fee. I wanted to, as we talked, I wanted to actually get a number on, in a discussion, so we could brainstorm of it reduced from $80 for the student parking fee at the high school to $20. So I just figured I'd get that out there, so we'd have like a, I think that would cover any nominal sticker charge and then give you a cushion, but also everything else could be incorporated, as we talked about, any salaries or whatnot could then be incorporated into our overall budget. But I just wanted to get that $20 on the table. The Cape Cod Collaborative, we're doing well as far as staffing and some financial instruments that we put into place. But also kind of a really neat thing is we've been brainstorming about getting all the superintendents together as a retreat to kind of brainstorm and leverage, share ideas about the opioid crisis. So I mean, that's down the line, but we just said, you know, we've got all these districts that, and we've got some kind of forum together with the 19 folks on the Collaborative, and we're trying to put together something. Appreciate any feedback that you might be willing to give, Nancy, you know, to make that happen, too.